Will we talk? Welcome everyone to Will We Talk, a podcast about music. We have often guests on the couch to speak about some of the music headlines. And the last two episodes you would have seen that we've just got artists in the spotlight, people that we've brought in to have conversations about what they do. This is because we've got a brand new show on our Instagram and TikTok. The Will We Talk News by Olivia May, who you would have seen on the couch, is out now. Please go and find that wherever you obviously get on your TikTok and Instagram. Find us at Will We Talk Pod. We are also in the studio for the very last time today, and it's not because the brilliant Badger and Coombs have kicked us out. We have found a new home. We are flying the nest. I want to thank Badger and Coombs for everything they've done. They are wonderful and we'll always work together in the future as they are brilliant. Go check out their work. Our artist in the spotlight today will start off with the brilliant Michael Gallagher. He sits across me with a brand new single out today as we record this. And we've got so much to talk about. Michael, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
Mate, on a day of release, how excited do you get? And tell us a little bit about the single that is out.
Yeah, well, it's quite, I suppose you work to like a certain point, then you release the song and it's kind of like, it's out of your control then. So it's like quite exciting to see how it gets received or whatever. And it's quite, it's quite mixed emotions to be fair, as you kind of care about all the stuff you've put into it. But yeah, it's a song called Rum and Raisin, which I recorded in Kempton Street in Liverpool with a producer called Alex Quinn. We recorded it last July with like a batch of the tunes. So it's been a while since I released any music. So this, this is a little bit different to like the normal stuff people might expect from me. So I wanted to put like, show something different and come back with surprise people basically, I suppose.
Surprise people. So tell us about the music that you've already released, a little bit about what you do.
Yeah. So it's all basically kind of like upbeat indie, like sing along, kind of tap your feet kind of stuff. Um. So yeah, this one's a little bit more like emotional and a bit more draws on like, um, a bit more of a message in it and stuff like that. So.
Nice. And why, why is that? Why have you gone down a nice little different avenues? Because you want to attract more people? Is you want to just let a bit of who you are personally out there?
I think it's, it was more kind of because I kind of wanted to try and develop my songwriting a little bit more. Um. I always try and write about like people or I know like experiences I've experienced or seen people experience. So this was one that where kind of, it's kind of about like people who struggle with addiction and like kind of how you can, people can sometimes be quite harsh to them when really they just need a bit of like, everything will be all right. You know what I mean? You've got like a mate or whatever.
Yeah, of course, and help them out. Just a bit about on you, you're from Hartlepool originally, now living in Manchester. That move, when did that happen? And what was the main reasons behind that?
Yeah. So I moved down from Hartlepool in November last year. So only like three months ago.
Wow, quality.
Still brand new to the city. Um. Yeah, it was just kind of decided to take an opportunity that got given to me and, um. Yeah, see if I fire out and take music basically and.
And really give it a good go.
Yeah.
Which is an incredible sort of dive into it. You've surrounded yourself with, obviously Michael Gallagher is a solo artist, but that's not really it. Cause you've got, you've got a band, you've got a manager, you've got everything really.
Yeah. Yeah. So like I say, we've got the three, three other musicians who play live with us who were like really brilliant musicians, a lot better than me. Um. So they're kind of like bring the level up a bit. And then there's other people involved as well, which helps drive it a bit more and stuff like that. So yeah.
And where did you all meet everyone? Wherever you found this little team?
So basically it all started with all just being mates from Hartlepool. And then the drummer went to uni in Manchester. So then when people weren't available, I met like these other musicians and then just kind of like a big group of friends basically. And then so now they've joined, joined down, moved down here.
Oh, quality. And what's the, the sort of biggest changes for you then?
From.
From Hartlepool to Manchester, yeah.
Just, well, trying to avoid the rain.
There's not raining Hartlepool, no.
But not as, it's not a sporadic. It could be like bright sunshine, then next thing you know, you're getting soaked.
It's wild, isn't it?
No, it's just, it's a, it's a lot different. It's a lot busier, but it's good. I'm enjoying it.
Yeah. And in terms of writing, you mentioned, um, before off, off air that you were, recorded this song in July. So sitting on that now, obviously we're in February, coming to the, to March, it's a long time to have a tune therefore.
Yeah.
Have you ever, obviously you've been very excited about this, but there's this sort of recency bias that we all go through where did you ever think about this tune may never actually come out?
No, well, I kind of like, I like writing kind of batches. I basically write songs like, I've set myself the challenge at the start of this year to write a song a week. So I've been like doing that on like my social media and that and sharing that, sharing them with people. So I'm always kind of trying to just write all like constantly.
Yeah.
So I've been sat in them for a while, but like I say, I was wanting to put it out back in the last year, but with moving down and stuff like that, it was, it was a lot going on in my personal life. So I kind of wanted to make sure it was right for now.
Make sure it was right and get it out there. That's an interesting thing about writing a song a week. How, I often wonder how, how, and this is going to be sounding like a stupid question, but I explain myself. Now, what'd you class as a song? Cause obviously you can get catch melodies, you can catch a chorus. Do you, is it a full fledged like three minute plus little number? Or are you happy with just a little catchy idea seeing how, cause you put these on social media, don't you?
Yeah.
Seeing how the audience reacts to them.
So so far I've been doing like a full song.
Wow. Full song a week, crazy.
But, um, I mean, I don't know if I've been off more than a chill, it might start just being like a chorus here and there towards the end of the year, but.
Do you know, like obviously you mentioned, you obviously got personal lyrics to yourself.
Yeah.
Do you ever find yourself, especially when you've not maybe not released music, do you ever find yourself obviously writing about something in one song? But then thinking later on that they, that those lyrics and those words might be better in another melody. Do they ever transfer over?
Yes.
Or do you feel like they've burned? Like you've, I've used that story now. I can't do it again.
I mean, if I'd have released it, I'd probably just wouldn't.
Yeah, that's done with it. It's released.
So kind of sometimes I've, I might have wrote two or three songs and that'll make like one, one song I'll take parts from that and, and.
The best bits and make it really nice. Oh, amazing. That's interesting though. And when it also comes to writing, do you, do you get the artists involved, the musicians are involved in it? Or do you present to them and go, this is what we're going to do?
Yeah. So basically I kind of like demo all in my bedroom. I'll put like rough kind of like, like guitar lines down and I can't play the drums. So I just put an automated drum beat in.
Yeah. Tech's helped there. Technology's helped there massively.
So then I will take, I'll take it to the band and like say, this is like what I've got. And then I might like change this bit, change that bit, but predominantly I'll write most of the stuff. Yeah.
And on social media, you've got a really nice sort of presence with your fans and the content is quite constant as well, isn't it? You're always putting stuff up and even if it's video snippets, lyrics, like you say, um, is that natural to you? Or do you have to put a bit of effort in for that?
That takes quite a lot of, to be fair. It's just, it's just, I think it's part and parcel of what you've got to do.
Yeah, yeah, especially now.
In this day and age, there's just like so much, so much relies on like engagement with people and getting people interested. So that's kind of just what you've got to do. So now I'm like really kind of pushing myself into that.
Oh, brilliant. Growing up in Hartlepool, what was it like in terms of your, your music? And what did you sort of used to love listening to? And has that changed or matured? Or is it still the same and you still love the certain bands?
Yeah. So there's not, there's a couple of little venues in Hartlepool and there's like, for like how small of a town it is, it's probably just when I was growing up, there was a really good music scene. There was a lot of like
Amazing.
Bands who were like a similar age to me and like all really like having a good go of it. So that's kind of how I got like into it. Cause I would go to their gigs and be like, oh, I want to try doing that.
There were particular gigging that you remember where you are? Wow, this is class.
Well, there's just like, there's like bands that my mates were in, like there's a band called Plaza, a band called Power Alter. Like they're all like my pals. So I just kind of went and watched them. I was like, oh, I might give that a go kind of thing.
Did you know you could sing?
Well, I still don't, I'm not like a, I try and sing. I wouldn't.
What do you mean? Who cares? You can sing.
Yeah. I think just anyone can have a go.
So when you saw those, saw those bands and then inspired you a little bit, in the back of your head, you're like, I want to do this, but you didn't, have you ever, have you ever sang a note yet? Is that something you might have done at school or anything? Or?
No, well, I actually, when I was in primary school, there was like a choir kind of thing. And I got told I couldn't be in it.
You're joking. Now look.
I was like 10. So, but yeah.
But then that's changed as it developed a little bit.
So yeah. So then I just started like writing songs and just learning that way.
Learn how to go. That must have took a bit of balls to try and, you know, to tell people that I'm, I'm going to be doing this.
Well, I think like, so obviously I started out playing just acoustic. So when you're doing shows in pubs and there's like 10 people there, that's quite like nerve wracking. And like, I think that's kind of how you learn like what's, what's good and what's, what's not good. So yeah.
Class. And live now at the minute, obviously not acoustic, you'd go around with, with the band. Um. Gigs that you sort of look forward to the most, are they the ones where you're headlining? Have you got some in the future, some like shared bills, some tour spot, uh, support slots?
Yeah. So, so I mean, usually it's the headline ones that you really look forward to. So we've done like some really good ones, like kind of done like Hartlepool Town Hall, which is like 500 cap.
Nice. How was that?
That was unreal. Yeah. We sold that out. So that was like, it's like, that was a really special night. And then like done like headlines in Newcastle and Manchester that we like sold out, but like smaller venues. But then when you get like, so I had some good opportunities, like played with like bands like the Pigeon Setters at New Century.
Great venue as well, by the way, New Century Hall, isn't it?
Yeah. Lovely. Absolutely. Yeah. And then I played like bands like Sherlock. So when you get opportunities like that and play in front of like their fans, that's like.
Got to do as much as you can.
Yeah. Really enjoy it like, but.
And with Hartlepool and that amazing sold out show, did word get around about you because people delved into your music? Did you work hard in the local scene? Was it your pub gigs?
Yeah. I think it was just basically from like grafting from playing, playing in like pubs to 10 people and then like going up to the like a little venue that's like 50 cap and doing like a hundred cap and then just kind of building like that. Yeah. So it took a while, but.
Is there anywhere else in Hartlepool that you'd look at over venue?
There's like a, there's like a, I think it's like a wedding venue as well and stuff like that. It's like, it's called the Borough Hall. It's like 2,000 cap, but.
Oh, big jump, but still.
I have played there before, but I've never, I've never done a headline there.
Amazing.
Maybe it was one day.
Yeah. With the new music and stuff like that. Cause obviously you can always look at putting new tunes out and with social media at the minute, and then just grabbing fans here, there and everywhere.
So yeah.
So it could be a wedding one day, you the next, eh? You've got it all in that venue, haven't you? I love it. In terms of 2024 then, like have you got certain things you want to, as well as writing every song a week? That's a nice goal. Is there stuff that you're also working towards?
Yeah. So we've got like more, more music to put out this year. So I'm not, I'm not sure, sure. It's definitely going to happen. I might try and like put like an EP out and it'd be nice, nice if we get some like
Yeah.
physical kind of copies, maybe some vinyls and stuff like that. And then just really just want to try and gig as much as we can and play as many shows to as many people and like festivals and stuff like that. So.
Class. Can I ask you a silly question?
Go on.
Well, not a silly question, but one where does anyone ever, how often do people ask you if you're related to the Gallaghers? Do people ask you a lot?
All the time. I think I've got the eyebrows for it as well. So.
Yeah. I mean, it's like someone being called Beckham and playing football. You would ask, are you related to David Beckham?
I wish I was.
You wish you were. But does that ever get annoying that where it's like, oh, fuck it. No. Just chill out.
Sometimes I just say, say that I am and just go along with it. Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Get four hands down. That's class. Music wise, with releases, you're sat on that tune that you wrote in July. You say a lot of stuff's happened. We won't go into that obviously. Are you going to be, with the fresh music that you're writing, are you waiting for that perfect song? To sort of take the headline and be one of your next ones? Or maybe even start an EP or?
It's a funny one. It's like, I say, I just, I just keep writing them. I think, I think sometimes like I might think one's really good. And then I'll, I'll show them to my friends and they'll be like, oh, I prefer that one. Or like, so it's kind of, it kind of depends what, I think people really decide which, which are the better songs. Do you know what I mean? So I might have a perception in my head, but like, oh, that's the one. Then someone else might have a different opinion. So it's all perspective.
Oh, perspective, of course. With your social media, where can people follow you and make sure they can get the best out of you? Cause you do, like I say, great posts like daily and weekly. And obviously the single is out now.
Yeah. Um, it's at Mickey Gell. So it's M I C K double Y G A double L.
Brilliant.
Michael Gallagher's too long for Instagram.
Instagram?
Yeah. So.
I love it. Night and Day. You're playing Night and Day soon.
Yeah, we're playing Night and Day on the 19th of April with Dirty Laces.
Quality.
And I think Chris Autons is DJ.
That's going to be a great list. That is a great list. It's part of a, what is that night? Is it a shared bill sort of event?
I think it's like, I think, um, I think Chris Autons like curated it. So he like chose the bands that we were going to play. I think there might be another, we're going to have a couple of bands getting out of Damont Show, but we got asked to play. So it was like.
Got to say, yeah.
Of the moon. Yeah. Yeah.
And Night and Day, incredible venue. Brilliant. Any other venue you want to tick off in Manchester?
Um, well, obviously all the big ones like the Ritz and stuff like that.
But doing already New Century Hall and stuff like that is phenomenal.
That was brilliant. But do you know players many that can around here really?
Of course. Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rum and Raisin, go and listen to it. Dive into it. It is out now. Michael Gallagher is gentleman. I will add some sound effects if I remember. Uh, thank you very much for coming here. We are back next with another band and artist in the spotlight just after this. Hello, you. Are you enjoying this podcast? Brilliant. Do us a favour. Make sure you hit the subscribe button below if you're watching on YouTube. If you are listening on Apple and Spotify, give us a little five star review and a follow. It really does mean the world to everyone who puts on this amazing pod. And we are going to be releasing weekly Will We Talk episodes for you. Welcome back to Will We Talk. This is part two. Do us a favour if you're listening, leave us a five star review. Why not? Get into it as well on YouTube. Leave us a sub. Get into the comments and say how much you like the show. Obviously if you hate it, fuck off. But let us know as well what bands, artists you want on here. We have got now Luke and Josh from the Denver County Council or on Instagram, the D C C. Gents, thank you very much for joining us. The best day, the best day you're going to see on this fucking podcast unless I get to Turkey anytime soon. What are we saying, gents? How are we?
All good. All good. And thanks for having us. It's an absolute pleasure.
No, mate. It's lovely. Cause, cause obviously this is the, the Denver County Council. How long have we been going for? Like, you know, in terms of like, so from the first gig or the first idea, maybe getting the band together.
I guess it's probably from the first idea of the concept of the tunes was about maybe two years ago. Me and Jake, who's the guitarist in the band and songwriter as well, we sort of have been in bands and whatnot together before. We broke away and went into different bands. And then we kind of came back. He sort of went through his Google Drive, found some tunes and then we started writing. Um, and we found that we've got some pretty decent tunes.
Of course, yeah.
But then we wanted to like figure out if, can we make it happen in a live room? You know, can we get a band together? And that's where Josh and the rest of the lads came in. Figured out probably last year that it's got legs. So we best make something work, you know?
Yeah. Because they said really nice, people won't know this, but it's really nice coming together of different brilliant artists from bands from the past that are now merging with this new group and, and together, everything all in looks like a little perfect fit. That must've been exciting when you were getting it all together.
Yeah. I mean, we felt, we felt like coming through, um, when everyone was coming together and we're connected with this, this lineup about a year ago.
Yeah.
Um, and sort of like feeling like everyone individually has always been the driving force in the bands that they were in. So like now we've got five people pulling in the same direction, which is just pretty refreshing to be honest. Everyone's got a role and everything moves a bit swifter. And, and no one feels like a bit vexed by that because they're, they're the one who's going like, come on lads, pulling you along. Everyone's pulling in the same way.
Yeah. 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 That's classic. And was it originally five? Or did that sort of develop when you needed more people within the group?
I think five was the number.
Yeah.
Purely because before I'd never been a frontman without an instrument.
Yeah.
Um, and I wanted to be a frontman without an instrument. Um, so I think we always needed a couple of guitars and obviously needed the bass and the drums. So I think it was always going to be five. We didn't think that we'd find.
Yeah.
The, the lads that we did find. And like you said, coming from different groups and we've known each other for years somehow in different parts of our, our lives. And then
Yeah.
when it came together, like I said, it was pretty much a special, special thing. Yeah.
There was the nice social aspect as well. Cause you've got, already got a brilliant following. When it comes down to sort of your own past and your own music, what do you think has changed a little bit about this band and this group? Is there a style? Is there a change in, in the music you want to be or inspired to be or what?
I think for me, I think it's about sort of the, it's going to sound a little bit wanky.
Yeah, it's wanky, isn't it? We've got a wanky series for five minutes. Someone goes.
How do you answer this in a fun way? I guess, no, it's, it's the maturity, I think of the songwriting. I think when you're a bit younger, you're a bit more, uh, I guess blasé about maybe what you're writing about or the structure of the songs, or how is it going to sound on radio? How's it going to look live and that kind of thing. And I think we've all been in situations before where we've gone from writing a song when we're 14, 15 to now writing tunes many years later. And I think it's, it's sort of, we've all developed as songwriters and as musicians. And I think right now we're in a spot where we kind of know what we're doing.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, I think what's nice about the songwriting process that I've noticed that's because the songs primarily come from like, uh, the guitarists, so like Jake and Ryan. And they get brought into a room. But what's great is that all five of us are songwriters as well. So like it moves things along quite nice and organically. And it seems like there's a natural unwritten like egos at the door thing.
Yeah, of course.
So everyone just rips into each other about like, if you know, if you've got an idea, we'll try it. But like everyone, no one pushes through. Like if it's bad, everyone just goes nah.
You know, once a tune is, is good, I guess. You know, when you've got a feeling, you know, when it's not working. I think when Jake brings a tune to the door and we look at it and I'll, I'll have a look at what melodies we can do and then pen the lyrics down. And then we take it into a room. And usually we're pretty prolific when it comes to going from idea to sort of actual product. Um.
Well, we don't overthink it, do we? Like, we don't, we don't really sit and go, right, let's work on that one tune over and over and over. Like, we're sort of like, once it's got a rough basis of a part where everyone goes, that feels good. We're quite happy to settle on that initial reaction.
Nice. One thing I want to talk about as well with you guys, and I was singing this on the way in, obviously kind of the, the sort of same age as well, is that there's this sort of weird angst in musicians where you kind of feel like you've got to make it when you're 21, otherwise you, there's no fucking point or you never will. Whereas there is, there is a lot in maturity. There's a lot in finding a group like this and realising that maybe when you were younger, you were doing stuff differently and, and wrongly. And now, you know, that must be, does that play, do you, do you think about that when you're going forward?
Yeah. I think, I think definitely you're right. I think you think that if you don't make it before you're 30, your time's up, you know?
Exactly.
Almost a bit like football, I guess. You know, if you pass a certain age, you're never going to get into the prem. But I think, I'd like to think that idea's passed now. And I think that kind of, the ability to, to write, I'm not saying that people at 21 can't write good songs, because obviously they can, of course. But I think with the experience, not just of music, but of the industry, how difficult it can be and situations you can get yourself in and how vulnerable you can be from a young age. I think it's good that we've got that mindset now that not just about songwriting, but how to handle people maybe in the industry and how to handle gigs and promoters, that kind of stuff. So I think that's something I've definitely thought about. Yeah.
What gigs have we done already then as, as the, as the group?
Well, we've done two gigs.
Two?
So we only came together, didn't we really? Like I said, as a band properly like last year. And then we wanted to obviously put that out into the real world in a, in a live format. And we did 33 Oldham Street, supporting a friend of ours, Oscar Corney. And he just called me because he was from London and coming up to do a show. And it was our first show. So we managed to, to help sell that out because it was a local show for us. And then Johnny from SJM asked us to do the rodeo.
Good lad, Johnny.
Yeah. And we were chuffed to do that. Um, we were initially sort of going to open the show and then we'd done pretty well in ticket sales, which we were really sort of chuffed about because we wanted to know if this is going to work or not.
Of course, yeah.
So we did that. And then that sold out as well. That was a big show. Um, and then next up.
Yeah. Talk to us what's next.
Yeah, this is pretty exciting, this one.
I'm buzzing for me, to be honest. It came out of the blue.
We got an email from SJM who offered us a support slot for the blinders at New Century Hall.
Saw that. Yeah, that's fucking exciting.
To go from, you know, a couple of hundred capacity venue to over a thousand, I think is, you know, that's the kind of ballpark we want to be in without being like, we deserve to be there. We need to be there. But we want to be there. And we want to show our worth and, and put a good show on. So we've got that coming up.
When is that? Is that April? What?
No, it's March 14th.
Class. Not far ahead. Yeah. That's like two weeks away. That's insane.
It's coming for us thick and fast. And like, we're, we're pretty buzzing with that. Cause obviously always been admirers of the blinders being like, obviously from Donny, but also like Manchester raised. And it's sort of similar for our band. We're like majority from Yorkshire, bred in Manchester, sort of like, and that's where our like sort of band home is really. So it's, it's just brilliant to be able to get an opportunity in that venue. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's mad to be our third gig. We keep laughing about it. Cause like, that is, that is crazy.
But as well, it is the coming together of your experience and your knowledge and the, the connections you've already made. So although it might be the third gig as you lot, you've done many gigs before.
Oh, yeah. There's like 15 year graft each.
That's another thing where if something does well, someone like, oh, it's a bit of an overnight success. It's gone from here to here. And whilst it might have done within that particular group, there's actually 15, 16 years of
Yeah.
sticking, trying to stick with the music industry and try to get what you want.
Playing to a sound guy and his dog and.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And yeah, yeah. So with the music that's out at a minute, what are people listening to? And how are you selling as many tickets as you are?
We've done, Chris from Sound On, um, managed to get in touch with us through a, through a friend because we got offered to do like a, a live session, uh, which we did. At Unit 26 in Salford with, with Ben Etchers and his team over there. So we've recorded sort of six tracks live and filmed. And we released them sort of every couple of weeks. Um, and we decided that we want, people are like, you can't just go to YouTube all the time to listen to the tunes.
Yeah.
So we, we put the audio of that on, on Spotify and created sort of a live tape, if you like.
Nice.
So people have been sort of buzzing off that, getting to know the tunes. So when they come to the gigs and that, they're there for them. But we're excited. A bit of a Will We Talk exclusive.
Love this. We love this. We'll clip this.
He's going in. He's going in.
This is it. Get ready. Get the champagne ready, lads. All the brews.
Lovely brew.
No, we've got our first single coming out March 29th.
Amazing.
Called Seventeen. So we're really, really excited to be playing gigs in and around that time. We've got a few more coming up too, to sort of celebrate the first release.
Is that new, the, the single? Or have we heard that before and you've remastered it?
That's not, that, that's purposely kept back from the live sessions. We did do it within that session, but like that song's not been out yet.
Why did that one stand out the most?
It just, um, for the aspirations of the band and where we, we'd like to envision ourselves going, it, it feels like it fills that space. So it felt good to start there. And we worked with Ben again on that. So we went to Kempton Street Studios.
Oh mate, he's a good lad, isn't he? Very talented people.
Yeah. Really like it, the way he thinks about music and like some of the, like the, his perception of our band as well. We just thought like that song was right to do with him.
Yeah.
So did it at Kempton Street in Liverpool, which is obviously like a phenomenal studio, amazing desk and, and all that. And yeah, just like a wicked couple of days with him and we really got stuck into it.
That must've been exciting for you as well, with the whole band.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
It was the, it was because we'd done the live, if we hadn't have done the live sessions and he hadn't produced those live sessions, we probably wouldn't have got this opportunity to do it. So it kind of felt right. Things sort of clicking into place and kind of making sense. Um, so that's when, when we got the opportunity to do it, we obviously, um, you know, grabbed it with both hands. Like, and like Josh said, what a studio.
Yeah. Yeah. Unreal. Do you have to consider everything now in terms of artwork, videos? Everything's got to be in full work.
We've never stopped talking. It gets annoying. We've had to create a different group chat because some of the lads are like, well, you just stop talking about the band and artwork and deciding on shit.
I think, I think me, me, Luke and Jake are a little bit version on like obsessed.
Yeah.
We've just, I think we do, we do have a tendency to overthink a little bit as well, but like.
Come your worst enemy in a way. Get in your own head, can't you?
Yeah. Yeah. And especially with like the progression of the band from first gig to now being like six months apart.
Yeah.
Um, you, you have to start thinking about all aesthetics of the band. It's not just about like, let's write some songs, do a couple of gigs. You've got to be like, well, how are we presenting ourselves? The new world of bloody TikTok that's like chuffing, man. Like, I've not had to do that in a band before. And we're like sat there going, well, what do we do the float?
Isn't it weird how so much has actually changed, isn't it?
Man.
For that, considering, I mean, we, we've obviously grown up together and seen how like, obviously you do music, we do podcasting and just seeing how much things have actually changed so much.
You've got to be everything.
It could be a good way as well, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, you've got to be internally now, like it's not just about like the years of musician graft. You've got, we've got to learn on the fly about being graphic designers, photographers, video editors. It's all, it's all that.
That's it. And when you're kind of doing it by yourselves, you forget. I think like to your point before about all the things you have to talk about, I think you forget, you go shit. Is there artwork there? Have we got a press shot? Do we need to speak to somebody else? When you're uploading it to DSPs, there's a lot for you to actually kind of do. And it does become a, like a full time job on the side, but we love it. You know what I mean? It's what we want to do for a profession. So you've, you've got to put the graft in like.
Of course. In terms of, this is the, the shit questions. The actual name itself, have you been asked about it yet?
We have in, in, in passing and conversations in the booze room and whatnot. Yeah.
Is your second name Denver?
It's Denver's.
Denver's.
Which I get, which does, it does derive from there. Right. I think it was a funny one. Band names are shit.
Yeah. It is funny, isn't it? Band names. And it's a shit question to ask, but I was just.
Without the music behind it, you, you, you isolate a name like of a band and like without the music where you go like, oh, I love that band. If you just think about the names, some of them are pretty shit.
Isn't there a weird science behind it? Cause I think yours is spot on.
Really?
Yeah. I think it is genuine.
We've been laughed at. It's just spot on.
No, cheers, man. I mean, like, uh, there, like myself included, there was a couple of us that needed a couple of days for it to sit right with. And it came out of a funny place really, because we had a thread of like, I'm not joking, like 500 words after Denver's or Denver. It was like, you know, just, oh, Denver snake, Denver like pothole or whatever.
We've loads of other really bad fucking ideas before that.
Bad names.
That word kind of stuck and it's kind of an interesting thing. And I always get called that. And it always, even if I introduce myself as Luke, no one ever calls me that. And it kind of sounds a bit interesting. So we're trying to put words after it just to see if it would work. And it wasn't working. I think we was talking on WhatsApp or whatever, or on voice notes or whatever we're doing. And I don't know. And I don't know why I said, I did say it as a piss take, because Denver County Council sounds like I'm about to come and collect your bins, do you know what I mean? So as I said it, I laughed. And then, and then one of the lads were like, I think it was Jake, said that looks quite kind of good written down. So I, I liked it, but then also we were speaking to promoters and whatnot at the time. We're like, what's your Instagram handle? What's your band name? I'm like, I can't turn around saying I haven't fucking got one yet, what a fucker. So we just kind of stuck, didn't it? And now people have had that response because it does stand out a little bit.
Yeah.
And now we're stuck with it, so.
Still with it. I've got a couple more questions left. How is the, how is the music scene at the minute? Because obviously, not, not a break, but you're obviously performing live as a band, sort of back at it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good. I think, I think you, you kind of get the blinkers on when you're doing it yourself to a degree because you just want to concentrate on what you're doing. But I think, I think maybe for guitar bands and guitar music, it isn't as prolific commercially anymore as what it was maybe a few years ago. And I'd like to see that come back. But I think locally around sort of Manchester itself in general or North West or over in Yorkshire, I think there's a lot of great talented artists out there that are grinding, that are trying to make it. But the thing is with venues and grassroots venues and grassroots music, it's not been fair on them. Not only with, you know, the C word and all that kind of carry on, but in general, for a long time, the, the industry struggled. And I think that that's what has been difficult for bands that are coming, that are coming through as well. But on that, I think just something around what I kind of wanted to talk about as well is that point about grassroots. It's kind of important to us because we want, we want to come through. We're grassroots and we always have been. And our friend Jimmy, who's got a bar called Jimmy's in, in Ancoats and had the New York Street venue.
Yep.
Matt and Fred's walked into their bar and they had a conversation about Jimmy's not being allowed by the council to put on gigs anymore. So Jimmy's is a music venue, right?
It was always a music venue, wasn't it? When it first opened in Manchester, yeah, it was quality.
Northern quarter for sure and.
That one toilet though, fuck me.
I know, man. The amount of times I were down the alley, fucking hell.
Crazy.
But yeah, so I mean, they, they sort of offered to help from a grassroots perspective and put a gig on at Matt and Fred's.
Nice.
And we got the opportunity to be the band that's gonna headline the first one on the 10th of May, so.
10th of May?
There we go, 10th of May.
And there's no money, there's, on your, on your bio, it says 27th of the 3rd. What's happening there?
Yeah, so we're playing at Basque in Stockport. It's like a launch night of a new night called NMB, New Music Night. So like, yeah, it's alongside that and a couple of, a couple of really great acts on there as well, like, so like, you know, it's, for me, I think, I think what's interesting is the thing that there is a growing sort of rumble about guitar music where it's not at the forefront of commercialism. I think that like people are starting to seek it. And for me personally, and I mean like, I just feel like guitar bands really are the, the voice of like change and making like real emotion come out of people, you know? There's nothing more powerful than a rock gig and a guitar based gig. So I think like people, like current times, climate, like obviously everything to do with the UK in general, I think that kind of music is really sort of coming up because people need that feeling. They need that bringing out of them or venting or whatever it is. So I hope, hopefully that it's a slight turning of the tide. If we are in a circle, like emo music's coming back, so indie's next, I guess, like, you know?
Do us a favour, just plug everything where we can find all this information out.
Sure. So we're on Instagram at Denver County Council. You'll find our Sound On, sort of tunes on there on Spotify as well. We've got the audio that's up there. Obviously we've got the gig that we've just spoke about with The Blinders, New Century Hall, 14th of March, 27th of March at Basque in Stockport. And then as I've just mentioned there, the collab with Jimmy's and Matt and Fred's, 10th of May, which will be a headline. And the second single launch.
That's a second explosive.
Second explosive, you lucky boy.
Check you out.
You can use all this. Anything else before we go?
Just honestly, if you can, support upcoming bands, there's a lot of good stuff going on in Manchester. Keep an eye out, check out and support your local venues, man. They're like, they are as up against it as all hospitality venues are, but they're not open every day all the time, all of them. So like if you can go to a gig, you might as well get down there because it might be a lot better than sitting and flicking free phone.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna say something else then. Right, I will, I will see yous later on. Thank you very much for watching. Like I said, this is the last podcast in this set. Give me about 10 days and I'm gonna get the whole new set all set up and ready to go. So you'll see us in a brand new look. This has been Will We Talk. Thank you for watching. Leave us a little like and a sub. We'll see you in a bit.